Aloha, everyone. Welcome to the July meeting of the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. Can't hear me? How about now? Is he okay? Sorry. Okay, this is our first meeting of the fiscal year of the Neighborhood Board year. Unfortunately, before we begin, on Sunday, we lost HPD retired Chief Lee Donahue. Chief Donahue wore Badge One with pride, honor, and integrity. He was our eighth Chief of Police in Honolulu from 1998 to 2004. Some of you may not know this, but when he was called to service to fill in for a member of the City Council, he stood up and did it, and his statement was, "I will not run for the seat again." So, folks, I would like just a moment of silence for the chief. Appreciate it. Thank you, everyone. Now, on a happier note, Jacob Winsec, would you please come forward, sir? The Neighborhood Board Number Nine extends its heartfelt congratulations to Jacob Winsec, and it goes on to say, "For your faithful duty," I don't know if that's true, but anyway, "for your duty and your sacrifice you made to the Waikiki Neighborhood. You made it a better place for the residents and our vital industry." And this goes on to thank you for all of your service. We will now go into the regular portion of our meeting, starting with the Honolulu Fire Department.
Good evening, Captain Keonia Baya. This is Brody Price from the Waikiki Fire Station. So, for the month of June, we had four nuisance fires, two cooking fires, ten activated alarms. We had 216 medical calls, eight motor vehicle collisions, none of which involved pedestrians, two hazardous material incidences. And because it's summertime, our fire safety tip has to do with grilling safety. So, one, always use barbecue grills outside away from doors, windows, vents, and other building openings. Place the grill well away from siding and decking rails and out from under eaves and overhanging branches according to manufacturer's instructions. Keep children and pets at least three feet away from cooking areas. Keep starter fluid, lighters, and matches all of children's range. Cook with caution. Be alert and stay at the grill while cooking. Never leave hot barbecue unattended. Light a propane grill only with the cover open. If the flame on the propane grill goes out, turn the grill and gas off and wait at least five minutes before we light. Periodically remove grease and fat buildup in the tray below. Periodically remove grease, fat buildup in the tray below the grill so it cannot ignite by a hot grill.
You have to speak directly into the mic.
Let the coals completely cool, disposing in a metal container. Never empty coals directly into a trash can. Do not store or use grill on a porch or balcony, including any porch or balcony on an upper level of the building. Always store propane gas tanks outside of the building or garages. Remember to properly inspect and maintain the tank fittings and tubing according to the manufacturer's instructions. Vapor leaks indoors can be easily ignited by pilot lights or electrical equipment causing Should you have any other questions, please email the HFD Community Relations Office at
For the Honolulu Fire Department. Any questions? Seeing none. Thank you for the wonderful job you do for us. We appreciate it. Thank you. Yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hello. Thank you for your service very much. About a year ago, I came here and asked a question. I'm not sure if either of you gentlemen were here, but it doesn't really matter, and I hope this isn't too repetitive. But I asked the question if it was always mandatory for sirens to be run on every dispatch. I'm really delighted that you're here from the Waikiki substation. Thank you for coming. Do you still feel that it is mandatory by statute that you run sirens on every dispatch?
I mean, if you look at, when we go through our stuff, even with our lights and sirens, it still is a little difficult getting people...
Can you speak right into the microphone like I am? Thank you.
Even with our, is this on? Even with our lights and sirens, it still is a little difficult having people hear even that and move out of the way. And also, just having our emergency vehicles... Hello, Tess? Yeah, so sometimes when we respond, especially out of our station, if you notice, the front of our apron, we need to cross, like, Kapahulu, which is usually pretty busy. So, a lot of times when we are doing those type of things that a normal driver would not be able to do, which is cross that double line, or sometimes we need to work our way through a red light. Having those lights and sirens on is what allows us to do that. So, those are big things, especially coming down Alawai, day and night. And there's cars coming out of those driveways a lot or all the way down. So, for us to work our way through a red light, I mean, for us, just to do that to begin with, we need that, those things on. If there is an accident where they hit us and I don't have that operating, then I will get, they will look at all the things that I'm supposed to do while responding, and that'll be me taking the heat for that.
Have all the drivers of emergency vehicles been notified by Chief Howe or Dr. Ireland that it is no longer mandatory, that you may now use discretion according to Senate Bill 346, that you may now use discretion in using sirens? Has that been conveyed to all the drivers? I'm curious, because I've tried four different times to find out from Chief Howe myself if you guys have been told about the new law.
That is written that it's on our discretion.
Pardon me?
It is told to us that some of it is under our discretion. Like, at night, we try and be mindful of the time of day and the time of night. And, you know, like, especially in this area, there's still with the clubs going on and things like that, 2:00 in the morning, 3:00 in the morning. To me, that's some of the most, that's some of those dangerous times, because you don't know who's on the road at that period of time. And if we don't have some of those things working, if we're coming down Alawai and, like, it's completely wide open, we usually kind of be as mindful as we possibly could until we hit the parts where, you know, there's driveways coming out now, and we're running into these red lights that we need to make our way through to get to where we gotta get.
Last night at 11:30, there wasn't very much traffic, hardly any, and the sirens were on. I also noticed sometimes the sirens are deployed for, like, two blocks out of the station. Maybe it's to get across...
There's often times where the cars, two blocks, three blocks in front of us, don't even hear that until we're right on them.
They can't hear you if their windows are up and their radios on.
Yeah, so a lot of times, they just stay in that middle lane and either just stay there until we're right on them.
I guess all I'm asking, and I think that the folks here are asking, is if you could use discretion at night especially, and just try to get through with your lights and maybe a horn now and then. I think there's a lot of studies that have shown they're not that necessary. You're not going to save that much time getting from station to wherever the incident is. You're not. And there are more accidents that are caused when sirens are deployed. Studies have shown that across the country. I just, I appreciate your time and letting me speak and ask these questions, and I hope that you'll consider that. I really will. I really do hope you do. Thank you.
Yeah, if I can just follow up on that, it's clear that the legislature last session passed a bill to change the mandatory language to a permissive language. It went from shall to may. So, there's a specific intent on the part of the legislature that discretion be exercised. So, to me, the real question that I think we have to look at is what kind of guidelines maybe will be developed in terms of when discretion is exercised? And also, how is that new mission going to be transmitted to the people on the front lines? Because it seems obvious that maybe not everybody is aware of how the law was changed. And so, I think that may be something that we as a board should be looking at in this new term. We should probably be looking to work with the Fire Department, EMS, you know, anybody else to sort of see what kind of guidelines they can develop. So, I think this is something that's really going to need a lot of follow-up.
Chair, can I ask a couple of quick follow-ups?
Sure, please.
Yeah, one statement before I ask my question, and I do appreciate your all's service to the community. My statement is that out of all the noises that happen in Waikiki, there is no doubt in my mind that the loudest noise, individual noise, is your air horn on your fire truck. Nothing else is as loud as that. It reaches, on my decibel meter on my phone, up to 80. When you blow that horn, it's coming down Kalakaua and to Waikiki, and by far the loudest thing. So, I appreciate the request for discretion and the intent of the law. Are you all using your sirens on every call?
That's pretty much what we, most of the time, we do. And like you said, depending when it is, time of day, even with that going on, nobody moves a lot of times.
So, yes, essentially.
You know, I mean, so that's a danger for that, people crossing in front of us.
How many calls a day are you going on?
I mean, that could vary from five to 15-plus.
And these calls are for even the most minor emergencies?
Well, I've been at somewhere, it comes in as difficulty breathing, and it turns into a cardiac.
Well, I wouldn't consider difficulty breathing minor. I would consider, you know, a broken finger, you know, a broken ankle even potentially.
Yeah, well, like I said, like, depends how it comes into the caller, how they describe it to our dispatch, how it gets to us. Something simple, like, would may come off as something minor, sometimes turn to a whole another situation.
So, I recently had the chance to speak to one of the EMS directors. Ambulances are different than the fire, obviously, right? And the guy that runs the ambulances, or one of their directors or directors, told me they had some classification system as to the severity of the injury or the emergency, and as to whether or not they use their sirens. I want to verify that with them, hopefully, in this forum. Do you have any instances or policies or guidelines regarding that, the severity, and when your discretion may be better utilized versus not?
Well, there's situations where we get called to just someone who's not, they can't lift themselves off the ground, they call. So, there's situations like that where it's obviously not maybe life-threatening, and all they need to do is get from the floor to their back to their bed.
And we get lights and sirens for that call?
That would not, that would not be lights and sirens.
Oh, okay. Good to hear.
So, things like that, if we can, if the caller can relay that message to our dispatch, and it falls under, I'm not exactly sure how they work it out.
Is that just practice, or is there some sort of standard practice or policy, is it written down, like, or is it just each of your individual discretion based on what you hear from dispatch in that emergency?
With the dispatch, we get a screen that shows kind of like what we're going to deal with when we go on this call. So, if it comes in like that, it'll be what we call a public assist, and then that would be a situation where we won't use our, we'll just go along with traffic, the regular traffic laws, and it's not like a real, we don't need to get there as fast as we can. So, we can just take our time and drive like a normal automobile.
I really appreciate you answering these questions. The topic of this entire meeting today is vehicle noise. And again, I'll go back to my original statement, which is, the loudest noise in Waikiki is the blow horn, not the sirens, but the arr, arrr. So, even if you could exercise your discretion, I think everybody hears the sirens. I mean, I can hear you coming from Kakaako. I mean, it's really that clear, and I'm not exaggerating there, at least by the convention center beyond. And I live on Kaioniana. So, I appreciate you guys being here and all you do, and if you could appreciate our efforts to reduce vehicle noise in Waikiki and how you can contribute to that, that's what I would like to ask, at least on my behalf, that you guys think about and start practicing. And we'd like to see the results of that. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. I don't see any more. Go ahead, but we're running out of time on this, so please make...
Thank you for your service. I brought in, I don't know, anywhere from six to 10 studies, and one study was a comprehensive study of all the other studies about ambulances and fire trucks. And all the studies, every one of them concluded that they actually slow you down. They don't get you there faster. And I gave, I believe I gave them to somebody here, maybe it was EMS people. But have those studies ever made it to your desk?
Not to my desk personally, but I think it needs to work from the top down and trickle down finally to us. Things need to be written in there where, like I said, like, he brought up, I think every station has their own areas that has their own, just their own little ways that they do things.
That sounds kind of arbitrary, not discretionary, you know?
Yeah, but we don't have nothing solidified saying, "Do not do this, do not use it at this point." So, a lot of times, this comes down to our driver and the captain of the truck, where they're responding, and certain areas, we know that are, a lot of times, more hazard to that area than not, that we may decide to use a horn or whatever to get the situation.
I'll sit out on my lanai on Alamoana, and it'd be late at night, and there'll be no cars in the street. I don't see any people, and those sirens will wake up everybody for miles around.
If we're going through a red light, sometimes you can't even see the car coming up on the green.
I understand there's a time and a place for them, but I don't think it should be every time you leave the station, because you're waking everybody up in Waikiki. And I don't, like the studies show, it doesn't really hit you there faster. It actually slows you down, because people can't see you, and they're just wondering where the heck you are, you know? So, you're creating a traffic jam. But I'd be happy to get those studies and give them to somebody. Yeah, there's, in fact, just in Sibyl Beach today, there's an article, there's an article about aging and sirens and noise and stuff, so. But I'll get you the studies. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, guys. Appreciate to be in with us tonight. And if I get a copy of the studies, I'll send them to the chief and see if he can take a look at it. So, send it to me, and I'll send it to the chief. Thank you again. Appreciate it. Okay, in our meeting in May, we asked the Honolulu Police Department to brief us on procedures they use for noisy vehicles. And tonight, we have Chief, Major Platt, and we have Brooks Behr from the Prosecutor's Office with two of his prosecutors. So, should we have questions for both sides, we'll be able to find out how it works from the time the ticket is handled to the time it goes to court. So, Major, if you would.
All right. Sure. So, the stats for June robberies, we had four. From the previous month, we had four. Burglaries, we had 12. Previous month, we had 12. Thefts, we had 171. The previous month, we had 170. For UNVs, 14. Previous month was 17. Assaults, we had 39. Previous month, up 25. Sex crimes, we had six. Previous month was four. Skateboards, bicycle violations, 29. The previous, 33. For speeding, 13 citations were issued from the previous month of 16. Parking violation, 1,960 from the previous month of 2,383. Loud mufflers, 15 from the previous month of 31. Park closures, 112 citations and 15 arrests. Previous month was 133 citations, eight arrests. For the total calls of service for the month of June was 5,303, from the previous month of 5,258.
Are there any questions on the statistics before we start the noise presentation? You had a quick question, sir.
Just a really quick question, thank you. Want to mention that half-year stats for District 6...
The half-year stats for District 6 are showing still great improvement. Everything's down double digits, including robbery, down 52 percent. So, that's a testament to all the work of the Police Department, the prosecutors are in here. We are holding people accountable for bad behavior, which is complete opposite of what some of our legislators and be-nice-to-criminals want, but we're doing the opposite, and it's working and it's helping the community. Number two, I've been complaining for three, two years about people not being held accountable for their citations, but starting about three weeks ago, I don't know what happened, a bolt of lightning from above. People who do not appear in court now on their citations actually are arrested on warrants. So, these guys sometimes make eight, nine, 10, 12 arrests a day for people for failing to appear on their citations. So, the criminal-friendly idea was, oh, give people citations because arresting them is mean. Well, guess what? Nobody goes to court, and they're going to go to court anyway now. So, you know, be careful what you ask for. You may get it. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Tim, did you have a question?
Yeah, can I ask a question about police concerns?
About what?
Police concerns. I was wondering, I was talking to the Transportation Director, Roger Morton, and he gives out all these permits for festivals and parades in Waikiki. I'm asking the Police Department whether you guys can do a better job, maybe assigning some of the officers at the intersections. On Saturday, there was a parade. I dropped my son off on Koa. It took me 25 minutes to get from the Hyatt to Kapahulu. And in that process, there were many officers along Kalakaua. I called the substation, asked maybe a couple could be directed to direct traffic. As I came up, and I was coming down Kohio, there was a dolphin bus parked right at the end of the Marriott, blocking one lane of Kohio, the only way out of Waikiki. And on the other lane, there was a vendor mowing the grass on Kohio. So, in effect, both lanes were blocked, and there's officers standing there watching it. So, I made a call to the Transportation Department to see if we can utilize whoever's putting on the parades to also provide traffic management. And then later that night, there was the parade that ended at Kapilani Park, and then that night, there was a concert at the Shell. And my luck, I got stuck in traffic in both things. Just to get from Kapahulu along the zoo up to my house, it took 17 minutes. No officers anywhere, nobody directing traffic. I'm not opposed to all these parades and events and Shell and everything else, but they should have to provide traffic management. They should have to pay off-duty officers, put on a yellow vest, put on a whistle. It's ridiculous. And my concern was, obviously, myself, but also all the tourists that had to get out of all the hotels and make a flight and get to the airport. They probably, some missed their flight. So, if you guys could take into consideration, and I'm going to follow this up as City Council, that whoever's putting on festivals or whatever, they provide that service to the community. We have all these festivals and parades. It's right here on the list, coming up, every two weeks. It's not brain science. I mean, it's just a little, a couple manpower. Instead of standing on the corner at the parade, put one up at each light. My suggestion. Thank you. Otherwise, you guys are doing, this Police Department's doing a fantastic job on cutting down the crime in Waikiki. Unbelievable. John and me have spent two years on this, and they have really stepped up, and I want the community to know it. You can walk down to the end of the street down here, it's a different world. It's a totally, along with the private security that's operating at night, you people can feel secure, which is the first time in 15 years. Thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Tim. So many of them now. See if a hand is up. Okay, well, thank you for that part of the presentation, and this is Major Platt, who runs the Waikiki District. Major?
Okay, thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight, and so, Bob asked me if I would put together a presentation on loud noise violations. So, I said, "Sure." And so, this is what we've got. We'll just go over, let's see if this thing. So, what we want to, what I want to cover really briefly is the three types of noise offenses. So, loud mufflers is one category. Then what we basically refer to as a boombox, boombox law, and then disorderly conduct. So, those are the three general categories that we have. Then we'll look at some of the challenges to enforcing the law, and then some new legislation at the end. So, I'm sorry, there's a lot of words, but basically, these are the statutes that we use. There was an earlier request from some of the board members as far as what exactly are we citing under? So, this is one, HRS 291-24. It's motorcycles and mopeds. So, basically, it says that, there are two parts to this one. Basically, every motorcycle or moped has to be equipped with a muffler to prevent excessive or unusual noise. So, that's one part of it, right? So, you have to have a muffler on a motorcycle or a moped that prevents that sound. The second part is that no person shall modify the exhaust system on a muffler or a moped to amplify or increase sound. Yeah? So, if you don't have one that keeps the sound down, that's a violation. And if you modify it to make it louder than it is, than it normally is, that's a violation. So, we cite under 291-24. This statute refers to, or applies to mopeds and motorcycles, okay? 24.5 refers to motor vehicles. So, now, we're talking about cars, trucks, yeah? It basically says similarly that no person shall use on a public highway, which just means street, shall use or install a muffler which is, which will noticeably increase the noise emitted by that car. Yeah? So, you can't put on a muffler to make it sound louder. Yeah? Okay, then we have, so this one, 291-22 refers to motor scooters. It's a category between mopeds and motorcycles, so we actually don't cite under this. It's a very narrow definition of the vehicle. So, the earlier ones were HRS statutes. We, the city's ROs often parallel the state statutes, and this is what we would use as far as the city ROs. So, under Section A, it's that no person shall operate. So, if you notice, this one includes motor vehicle and moped, yeah, that's equipped with a muffler. You can't drive one that's not equipped with a muffler that prevents excessive or annoying sounds. Yeah? So, again, similar to the state one, yeah, you have to have a muffler on it to prevent the sound from being excessive or unusual. Yeah? And then, Section B says that no person shall operate a motor vehicle or a moped unless it has a... it has a exhaust system designed to prevent excessive or unusual noise. So again, it parallels the state statute. The definition of excessive or unusual noise is important because that's what we use, or that's what the prosecutors use when they try, when they, when they prosecute these cases. So it would be noise in excess of the usual noise that would necessarily result from the operation of a motor when reduced to the minimum by a muffler. So it's kind of just legalese, yeah, and you kind of have to walk through it, but it's what we deal with. So you may think that these are very simple things, but naturally, when you get down to the nitty-gritty, it's not, not exactly so, yeah? So, uh, our, the RO fifteen dash nineteen point twenty-eight has several sections, we just went over A, B. So C and D, uh, again, basically are saying that you can't operate a motor vehicle or a moped with an exhaust system that has been altered or mo, or modified, yeah? And section, subsection D says that, uh, you can't operate it with an exhaust system that will amplify or increase the noise. So the laws are there. The laws are there, yeah? These are the challenges that police officers face trying to enforce the law, yeah? One is that it has to be an on-view violation. So the officer must observe the violation in person. You can't, I can't cite somebody because you ran up to me and said, I heard a guy go by with a loud muffler, yeah? I, I have to, as a police officer, I have to see it. It has to be an on-view violation. If you call nine-one-one typically and report it, by the time the officer gets there, uh, that motorcycle is long gone, or that car is, is left the street. So that, that makes it a challenge, right? You hear it, you call, we're behind the eight ball, we're, we're, we're chasing, right? It's hard. Another kind of difficulty that we have is that some motorcycles are equipped from the factory already with loud mufflers. For example, Harley-Davidsons. So to apply the statute, it, it's hard for the officer, the officer has, is gonna cite and has to be able to testify that the sound that he hears is louder than that motorcycle as it comes from the factory. And if we're not a bike, uh, you know, person, ride all the time, it's, it's a little hard for us to, to make that, that differentiation if we're not skilled in that, right? So that's just something to take into consideration. The safety inspections, uh, for moped, they have a decibel limit, that's it, it can't exceed a hundred, uh, decibels, but there's none for motorcycles, yeah? And the final point is, is the hardest one for us, and I'm just being completely honest about it, is that if we actually catch an on-view violation, we have to stop the person. And mopeds in particular will run from us, yeah? And so the officer has to make a decision, do I chase this person now with my lights and siren and either cause him to now drive recklessly and run into an intersection where people are jaywalking, a family that has two kids and a baby in a stroller? Am I gonna be a proximate cause in an accident that takes those people out? No, we're not. So we have to weigh, what's the value of a citing for a traffic infraction where the fine is seventy-two dollars, they're not even required to go to court versus getting into an accident and hurting or, you know, destroying a car, or worse than that, injuring someone, yeah? So we, we, we have to, we have to balance that. I'm not saying that we don't do it ever, but we have to, um, we have to deal with that, yeah? Do we chase or do we not? And we're not going, I can just tell you, it's not worth it to chase somebody. So the people that we tag are sort of that in-between law-abiding. They're not law-abiding as far as their equipment on their motorcycle or their moped, but they're not dumb enough to run away from us, yeah? But that is something that, that, that's a, a challenge that I think the board members need to be aware of. All that being said, though, um, these are the stats for us. So from the beginning of the year, we have, using the sections that I just went over, yeah, we've cited approximately, we've issued approximately sixty citations to people, yeah? So we are, we are doing enforcement the best that we can, yeah? It, it is a challenge, but we are out there. We are, we are giving tags, we are citing, stopping and citing people, okay? The boombox law. So another frequent complaint that we get about sound is that, so not from cars, this is, we're not talking about cars or motorcycles, mopeds, we're talking about just, uh, noise on the sidewalk. So basically, street performers, yeah? So this is, the RO forty-one dash six-point-one is a prohibited noise law. It basically says it's unlawful for anyone to play or use, uh, a radio, tape recorder, cassette player, or other machine or device for reproducing sound, yeah? As long as it's located on city property, could be the street, a park, or if it's from a car. But the challenge, yeah, so that, that's what the loss is, yeah? Kind of the challenge for us with the boombox law is it was made back when people used to walk around the street carrying what's called boomboxes. I mean, that's our name for it, and we've always, we've called it the boombox buff, law for years, but it refers to these gigantic things that people would carry and then place on the ground and just blast their music. So the law was crafted back then, I don't know exactly when, but for that, so if you look at it, it applies to radio, tape recorder, cassette player, or other machine devices. We have to make sure that we're citing for that, that the sound is coming from that and that it's reproduced sound, yeah? Sound that is previously made, so coming through a radio station, there's a recording of this sound, it's a sound that's already been made and it's now being reproduced through your instrument, yeah? So that section, to a point, limits us with what we can actually enforce, yeah? And although not specifically implied, using a boombox or speaker to amplify your sound or your voice is actually allowed under the First Amendment. So this whole, we, we've had this whole discussion, and you're all aware of it from Bill Forty-three, which is about amplified sound, and there's huge challenges to that, right? So despite the challenges with the law, we still cite what we can, yeah? So HPD has issued forty-one boombox citations, yeah? And just an interesting note here, of the forty-one citations, five were actually from the vehicle, so we hear it, the officer's able to be on the street, hear the sound, boom, 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 stop the car, issue the citation. But the vast majority are gonna be from these, uh, recording instruments that basically street performers or people are using, and it's already recorded sound, and they're using it, and we're able to cite based on that. So it does fit the definition, and when it does fit the definition, we can cite, and we do, yeah? This other category, um, is disorderly conduct. It's, it's not really applicable for most of your concerns. Disorderly conduct has to do with basically, this is what we use for loud parties at home, so more in a residential area where the, the noise is coming from a house, police will have to go, there's a process to it, you gotta go once, you gotta give a verbal warning, and then you go and then we'll go on the radio and say, second warning given, then we'll cite. We actually can arrest under this statute, but we rarely actually get there. Um, and again, the way that, what the law says is that, uh, if a person commits this offense of disorderly conduct if with intent, and this is something else that you have to prove, is a state of mind, but with intent to cause physical inconvenience, they make unreasonable noise, yeah? Unreasonable noise, there's a definition of that in the law, and so again, we have to make sure that we're, what we're citing fits that definition, yeah? But the meaning of it is that basically, uh, it's conduct, we take into consideration the nature of the place, yeah? So if it's in a resident that's in a quiet neighborhood, like, uh, Kaileua somewhere, Mauna Wili, where it's already quiet and you've got a loud party going on, easy to make that violation. Little more challenging in a place like Waikiki where it's the, the, I wouldn't say the city doesn't sleep, but there's a lot going on at twelve o'clock at night, even at two o'clock at night, right? So that, you have to consider the nature of the location, the time of day or night, yeah? Uh, four o'clock in the morning, it's easy to make a violation, not so easy to make one at ten, at ten PM. So we have to consider all of those things, and what the court is looking at is that the conduct involves a gross deviation. That's pretty severe, yeah? It has to be a gross deviation from what a law-abiding citizen would do, yeah? So, yeah, there is, it is subjective to a point, but that's what we have to do. It's not, so what I'm saying is it's not exactly clear-cut, right? And then the last thing is failure to abide by the, uh, admonition of a police officer. So if we, in other words, we get there, we'll tell you it's too loud, yeah? Turn it down. We go away, we, we get a call again, we come back, and we say, I told you, uh, to turn it down, and if you don't turn it down, I'm gonna cite. And then we actually go on the radio and we document, second warning given. If we get called back again, yeah, now we're citing you based on this because you've been told, and by your continuing to do it, you now show intent, which we have to have, yeah? And you're not listening to the instructions of a police officer. So again, there is a process with it, yeah? Um, this has to do with the houses, I'm not really gonna go over this one, this slide, yeah? Um, the challenge is, yeah? So with disorderly conduct, we have to get, we need community involvement. So a complainant or a witness is needed to help strengthen the case and to prevent the perception that the police officer is just picking on somebody, yeah? So, which is why for something like this, we're gonna ask, uh, we're gonna ask for somebody to be a complainant, to write a statement for us. Once we get that, to ID a person to say, this is the guy, this is where the noise is coming from, then we'll go and say, yeah, on behalf of this person, yeah, we'll make that, that call. And again, it's progressive, yeah? So that's just to give you an understanding of what we face. So again, we, we are citing, we are stopping vehicles, traffic stopping them, we are issuing, issuing taxes. It may not seem like it, but again, understand the conditions that we have to work with and the law that we have to deal with, yeah? Just, I just wanted to bring up some new legislation. Uh, one of those is Act sixteen, which was, which was brought up by, uh, one of the board members, um, which was passed by the legislature this year and signed by the governor. So basically, it's, makes it discretionary, and again, that word is important, but it's discretionary for emergency vehicles to use sirens when responding to an emergency. And again, that was asked of the, of our fire, fire friends, yeah? That they would just use discretion, and the law allows them to do that, okay? A second law that was passed is Act sixty-three. It's basically appropriates funds, uh, for the use and study of traffic, or of noise detection traffic cameras. So it's a step, yeah? Again, it's not gonna give any immediate release, but it, we will help gather data that can be used to, uh, create further legislation, legislation. The last thing we have is, uh, we are working again with the, with Tommy Waters and his office, uh, with the prosecutors, and with, um, uh, Corporation Council, which is attorneys for the city, to make changes to, uh, RO forty-one dash six-point-one, which is the boombox law. And the key thing that we're, we're looking at doing is, uh, in, having it include the word produced sound as opposed to reproduced. Because now, if you're out there, now you're making, you're creating music, you're making noise, yeah? That can become a violation. So I don't have to rely on a CD that you're playing, yeah, or a track that you're playing, in other words, if you're performing, yeah? So we're also trying to get the law so that it includes instruments. So I can not only cite you, but take away your drum set, or take away your guitar, yeah? That's legislation that will help us, and I think will help to, um, bring the noise, or at least keep people from being crazy with it, yeah? So again, the language of it has to be very clear, um, so, and it is something that we are, we are, I, I get emails and we go back and forth from, uh, again, Tommy Waters' office, from Corp Council, yeah? So that's what I have for you today as far as, uh, noise legislation, and if there are any questions, sir?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, great presentation, and I was gonna ask you about that last one, are you amending the, um, produced noise? That's, that's a ridiculous, um, thing not to include. It's noise.
Yeah.
So thanks for pursuing that. Just had some, um, questions. Does the state, uh, HRS supersede ROH?
No, they're equal.
They're equal, okay. And those applied to the public right-of-ways, I assume? Because I'm just thinking, in Waikiki, we only have one state highway, and this is mostly going to the car issue or motorcycle issue.
Mm-hmm.
But yeah, so if, if they're kind of consistent, I, I would enforce, if one's more than the other, I would enforce, but you say that they're pretty much the same.
Yeah.
Regulations.
Right, right, right.
Okay, um, again, great presentation. This really clarifies it for me.
Okay.
Because it's, it's complicated, but you explained why it's complicated, um, but I still want you to work hard to, to enforce this, and I like that you're citing people. Um, seventy-two dollars.
Yeah.
Is a pittance. That's what you pay to get your car detailed. Um, double, triple that.
Right.
Because this is not a disscent to anyone.
Yep.
So, and I know you're not in charge of this, but.
Right.
I would advocate for and welcome fines being raised at three hundred dollars.
So you're absolutely right, there is a range, uh, and we, the police department doesn't set that range, but seventy-two dollars, two dollars is, I would say, on the low side of it. So that's something, uh, conversation that has to be had with, with, uh, the people who set that, that, uh, scale, but thank you.
Other questions? Go ahead, Tim.
Thank you, officer. You hear me? Yeah. Um, I, I just can't begin to, I have a statement and then a few questions, just like the fire department. Uh, my statement is that I, I really can't begin to, to tell you how much I appreciate the same way others do about the reduction in crime in Waikiki. Hats off to you. Thank you for your work. Um, that being said, I'm not sure I've ever been part of a presentation where you have a police department presenting a slideshow of reasons of why they can't enforce the laws that are there to protect us. That's upsetting to me. And quite frankly, as much as violent crime is a major, obvious, something that needs to be addressed by your department, um, one person has the opportunity to wake up twenty-five thousand people that live in Waikiki just because they want to. At two AM in the morning, it's a, it's attention-seeking conduct, it's a crime, and the only people they don't seem to get attention from is our Honolulu Police Department, and now we have the list of explanations as to why. So that's my statement. Uh, my question is, you, you talked about on view, right, or in view, or did you use on view?
On view, on view.
On view. Um, isn't speeding on view?
Yeah.
You catch speeders, yes?
Right.
Isn't jaywalking on view?
Right.
You catch jaywalkers.
Mm-hmm.
I, I feel like on view shouldn't be a problem here. You could stand on Alamoana Boulevard with an officer and watch them and listen to them race down, um, the street.
Right. And then we have to catch them.
Okay, so I was once pulled over in Topeka, Kansas, and the way they did it is they had the officer on the road, sitting there with the gun, they spotted me, and then they said, pull over.
Mm-hmm.
And up the street, two blocks, was the vehicles, the police officers. It's similar to a DWI checkpoint.
Mm-hmm.
Right? You know, um, so I feel like there's ways of, of dealing with the on view.
Yeah.
And not, like, not even that creative, but, you know, a little creative. Um, you, you mentioned the mufflers, you gotta know whether or not the vehicle is, comes installed with that muffler or not. You mentioned Harley-Davidson as the example.
Mm-hmm.
I'm familiar with a Harley-Davidson looks like. I'd assume you would, too.
Yeah.
I mean, it's pretty blatant, right? Everybody, I think, has a sense. Can you name another example of a type of vehicle where you're unsure whether or not it's produced with a loud muffler or not?
Well, I don't own a Harley-Davidson, and, and I'm not a motorcycle guy, so I don't really know what it sounds like from the factory. But from what I've heard, some of them are very loud coming out, so.
Okay, so, so on that assumption, you, I'm hearing, just don't pull them over because it requires an assumption. It's not a Harley, but it could be one of those other that, I don't know.
Right.
That's, that's the reason. Um, you, you talked about them running. Isn't running from the police a crime? I think so, yeah?
It can be, yeah.
Um, so if you.
It can be, but not always, yeah?
If you, if you tempted to pull me over and I sped off, isn't me speeding off a crime in and of itself?
We would make, it's possible, and we would make, uh, failure to stop.
So, so what I'm hearing, I think, is that because you assume these people will commit a crime to get away with you, you're unable even to attempt to pull them over.
No, we actually do cite, and I gave numbers of citations that we have issued.
Okay, but you did say part of your presentation was that you don't pull them over under the assumption that these people will run away, and if we, if, and I, you know, I appreciate firsthand, uh, the liability you subject yourself to, uh, but, you know, my, my thought is, are you trying to pull them over?
Yes, we are.
And then they run?
We, we are trying.
Okay.
We run operations.
I just wanna make sure.
For loud, for loud muffler.
I just wanna make sure that, you, you know, a police officer assuming someone will run is, gives them reason not to attempt to stop them. I understand once you attempt to stop and then run, that's, you gotta let them go.
Yeah, so let me just.
Please.
Again, rephrase it. We don't assume that they will run, but we're aware that they might, yeah? We have to consider, we're, we're aware that a person may take off from us. We don't assume that everybody will, otherwise, why do it?
But, but.
So there's not an assumption that every person that we stop is gonna flee from us, but we're aware that, that's a possibility.
But, and that possibility has led you, from what I believe you've told me, correct me if I'm wrong, not to try to pull over certain individuals?
We, we, again, we try and stop people, we do.
Um, you, you talk about disorderly conduct, and I was really interested to hear that you're only using. using that for the purposes of a home.
Oh, no. That, that's as it applies to sound. We, we use disorderly conduct
So
probably daily.
I, I appreciate, living in Waikiki, we subject ourselves to some degree, a level of noise. People, just general vehicle, um, traffic, you know, tourists, um, you name it, we're familiar with it. But we talk about gross deviation pursuant to disorderly conduct. I, I don't know of any individual, whether you live in Manoa or Waikiki, where you want a race car sounding like engine zooming past your residence. And if it's disorderly conduct in your neighborhood, then it should be disorderly conduct in our neighborhood. And I would like to see that, um, the, the noise variance be used for disorderly conduct, because i- it, in my review of the laws, that is the one that is pretty clear as to what is prohibited. It provides a definition of, considering the time and place you had in your slideshow. So can you tell me how many times a vehicle, uh, noise has been cited for disorderly conduct rather than a muffler law?
Yeah, I don't have the stats, but I would say probably zero.
Okay.
We don't use that statute for cars.
So is there a reason you don't use it for cars?
It, we, because we use the others, the other HRS statute.
This monkey used fifteen mufflers. So out of all the noise, the vehicle noise that's been made in Waikiki over the last month, there's fifteen citations, and there's eight
Well, there's forty, actually. There's sixty.
Sixty, okay.
There's sixty, like, loud noise muffler type.
Well, I, I thought you said boomboxes, right?
Oh, okay, so whatever, boombox, yeah.
We're talking about vehicle noise here tonight. Um, and I appreciate boombox noise is also noise. There's a lot of sources of noise in Waikiki. Um, I've taken my time. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sir?
Sorry, hi, sir. Um, it seems like you're kind of, sorry, sir, it sounds like you're kind of, uh, damned if you do, damned if you don't. So if you, we have people complaining that they don't like the sirens, but yet, when you try to stop someone and then you have to chase them, you're gonna have to use the sirens. So I think we need to pick and choose what our challenges are. And the fact that he brought up what challenges are, he's just being honest. You know, he's just telling you, "Hey, these are the things we face."
Mm-hmm.
He's just telling us, and as attorneys, we should know better. We should know that the law is tricky and that it's very subjective. And when, so I feel for you, and I'm sorry, um.
No, thank you.
We had to go through.
Uh, while we're here, just a minute. We have two attorneys from the prosecutor's office, and I, I'd like to have the prosecutor's, uh, input on how they respond to this type of thing, if they do.
Sorry, I'm short. Okay. Um, oh, I shouldn't choose this myself. Uh, my name is Trish Nakamatsu. I'm a deputy prosecutor with Prosecuting Attorney's Office. I've been there since 2010, so about twelve, thirteen years, primarily doing legislative duties, so I'm very familiar with a lot of the legislative work. We also help with Missing and Hidden Traffic Court as well, um, once in a while when they need help. So we're familiar with that as well.
And first off, good evening, uh, chair, vice chair, members of the, um, neighborhood board. Uh, just on behalf of the prosecutor's office, I just wanna thank you guys for allowing us to be here, um, and to answer any questions, and, um, my name is Mark Tom. I'm with the, I'm a deputy prosecuting attorney as well. I am also do legislative work. Um, I help in various divisions, whether it's domestic violence, traffic offenses, or in the felony division. So again, uh, thank you so much for having us, and if there's any questions, we are here to at least try to answer those for you as best as possible. Thank you.
Questions for the prosecutor's office?
Yeah, hi. Uh, I recognize you guys in the legislature. So as a fellow attorney, I guess I'm curious, so how do these places, how do these cases play out in court? I mean, I mean, I mean, Major talked about some of the challenges that they, that they face, uh, but I'm a little curious as to how these things play out in terms of, uh, what kind of witnesses you have to have. I mean, do you actually go to trial? I mean, people fight these things? Do you end up with a plea agreement? Maybe you could give us a little insight. And I know that, I think one of the questions that was raised in the past was that, uh, at one time, I think the police department, uh, expressed that maybe the prosecutor's office was reluctant to prosecute these cases, and maybe that impacted their enforcement. So maybe you could speak to that issue as well?
Okay, um, if we're focusing on the mufflers first, is that with regards to the mufflers? So with regards to the mufflers, those main, uh, the ordinance and the two HRS sections that the major referred to in his presentation are actually infractions. So our office doesn't deal with those very often. Infractions are those tickets that are issued directly by a police officer to a person. It has a date for you to show up, go to court. Then you'll appear before a judge, or you could send in a denial, or you could just send in payment if you wanna accept responsibility for it. And if it ends at any one of those levels, then it never even comes to our office. There is no trial per se. It's strictly between the person who is cited and the judge. Um, if the person, if the judge, they do contest it, and the judge finds in the state's favor, the person can basically appeal and go to what's called a trial de novo. So a trial de novo is more like what we're familiar with, um, in terms of a trial where there's witnesses. A state can bring typically the police officer who cited the, the person that was driving. And then we would have like a mini-trial, basically. The defendant can also bring their witnesses if they like, and the judge would make a ruling from the bench. Correct, and that is the only time that our office would deal with those cases.
And then you would be involved.
Correct.
That is true.
Yeah.
And also in those cases, when it's an infraction, um, I try to just speak loud, and then we just kinda spread out. Uh, when it's
Oh, he's recording.
So sorry, so when it's an infraction and it goes to a trial de novo, the standard of proof in those types of cases for infraction-type cases, and so, so those are like, the common ones that you see is speeding, not excessive criminal speeding, but just your regular speeding, jaywalking, running a red light, those are the type of infractions that you're, most people are common, um, commonly know as infractions. But those, the standard of proof is just by a preponderance. So just a little more than fifty percent that the state needs to prove, as opposed to when it's a violation, or when it's a petty misdemeanor, or above, it becomes beyond a reasonable doubt, so just filling in the blanks.
Are they tough cases to prove?
I'm sorry.
Sorry. Are they tough, are they tough cases? I mean, if somebody really contests, are they, are they kinda, are they tough to prove? Or you usually have some pretty good success?
The muffler cases, I don't know that we actually get very many of those going to trial de novo. Uh, most of the time, it's, uh, almost exclusively handled at that first level with just the judge, or people just paying the ticket, because it's not worth their time to show up in court.
And just, just to follow up, oh, I apologize, Mr. Coachman. Um, just to follow up, on the seventy-two dollars where they set it, that, that is actually set by, um, I believe the judiciary, they have a scale for all different infraction-type cases. So whether it's speeding, running a red light, there's a scale that's produced, so.
And that's, that's by statute, basically. That was done, uh, some years back to try to streamline procedures when they created Traffic Court, um, to try to speed things up and handle the level of volume that we do. They basically made it so that all traffic infractions are on this schedule that is set by the courts.
Go ahead.
Thank you both for coming, and Mark, nice to see you again.
Nice to see you.
Is disorderly conduct, I guess, is, would be a claim that what your office would handle, correct? Um, if a vehicle, just kinda hypothetically, if a vehicle made the noises you know they're capable of making was cited by a Honolulu police officer as disorderly conduct, is that a, a case that you guys would prosecute?
Like anything else, I suppose it would depend, uh, just on a case-by-case basis. I don't know that our offices ever
I'll give you the case, because we all experience it every single night. 2:00 AM in the morning, a race car room that, that's, you know, you would find at a racecar track.
Sure. Um, yeah, I, I live in Kalihii, so we have, I don't know how similar problems, but I can tell you that we have serious problems with vehicle noise as well. I live on a very busy street, so maybe I can relate a little bit to this issue. Um, I don't know that our office has ever received a disorderly conduct case based on a noisy car, a noisy vehicle. Um, but looking at the statute itself, um, I, I can see why it's not the police officer's go-to statute, simply because it's not as on point as the, the muffler, um,
Well, to the degree To the degree they don't know that a muffler is, came with the vehicle or not, I think is irrelevant to whether it's considered, um, disorderly conduct pursuant to the definition of unreasonable noise.
Right, like you said, it would be a gross deviation from the standard of conduct that a law-abiding citizen would follow in this same situation. Um, and I, I just, it's never
I think you can ask anybody in here, and they'll tell you what your juror pool, um, would think about. What's a gross deviation, and a 2:00 AM race car driving by your window, that, that's a gross deviation. I, I feel comfortable saying that loud and clear.
And, and I totally, totally understand where you're coming from, um, board member. And, um, in terms of disorderly conduct, when it doesn't cause a physical inconvenience, uh, when it's a physical inconvenience that is also involved, then it becomes a petty misdemeanor. Um, and when it, when it's, when it does not involve a physical inconvenience by statute,
What's that mean? I, I'm unfamiliar with that.
Substantial.
A physical? You're using the word physical? Like, I can hear you. Touch.
Yep. It says, "With the intent to cause physical inconvenience or alarm."
Well, alarm, or alarm. Alarm is alarm, not physical touch.
Yep, so I apologize. So, eh, when you look at subsection three, so disorderly conduct is 711101, subsection three. Um, this is the penalty section of that, of disorderly conduct. And it basically says disorderly conduct is a petty misdemeanor if it's the defendant's intention to cause substantial harm or serious inconvenience, or if the defendant persists in disorderly conduct after reasonable warning or request to desist. Otherwise, disorderly conduct is a violation, which a lot of those ROHs for the mufflers are also
So what you're telling me is that the officers can say, "Hey, knock it off", and their failure to heed the officer's command would result in disorderly conduct, correct? It's the last line of the statute of that subsection. And, and so, you know, I don't think our officers are saying that. So if they said that continuously, then that would be another way to constitute disorderly conduct, correct?
It could be something worth exploring. I don't think that, that interpretation has ever been
I, I'm hearing a lot of excuses, and that, that's disappointing. And so I, I'll end there. I think my point's been made. I, I really appreciate you guys. I, I would like for you to consider the fact that we struggle with noise, and that there's scientific proof that noise is a problem. And although we have subjected ourselves to living to an increased level of noise, not to gross deviations of noise, and gross deviations of noise are happening constantly. You can hear the sirens right now, you know, from HFDE. That, that's included. This is a big conversation. I appreciate the chair for the large conversation we are having here.
John, you have a, a question?
Hi, guys. My name is John Dootsmann. I'm a pen pal of your office. I follow every arrest in District 6. Andrew and Florence get my emails almost daily. Just to educate everybody here, because I don't think you guys are cleared with Lou's question, how many of these cases actually go to trial? I will tell you out of, dirty, safe and sound, out of almost seven hundred arrests, only four have gone to trial. Only four have been decided by a judge, no jury trials, and that's for people who are physically arrested. So as far as muffler cases, I don't know if it's ever happened, to be honest with you. Maybe it has. So this, thinking about this, each case, like it's gonna be the, the OJ Simpson case, is ludicrous based on the stats. Number two, on these infractions, they default into money payments. It's like jaywalking. I don't know what it is, but if you don't, you know, uh, file your ticket or whatever, it's like a hundred dollars, let's say, a hundred eighty dollars. And you don't have to pay. You never have to pay. Especially if you don't have money, there's a debtor's prison thing, so it can never be held against you. So most of our homeless people here have ten, twenty, thirty, five hundred citations for jaywalking or whatever, and they don't have to pay. So, and there's never any test in court, ever, when they say, "Oh, I'm poor", the judge says, "Oh, I'm sorry, you're poor", and that, and that, it all goes away. We have a drug dealer here who's now facing fifty years in prison, who was too poor to pay every single misdemeanor case for the court fees, but he got, got out of fifty thousand dollar bond, and he got, got a lawyer when the time came. So there's a lot of things that are weighted towards the lawbreakers in this community. I just wanna be, be really clear, these don't all go to Perry Mason, OJ Simpson trials. Probably none of them do. Thanks.
So thank you, Mr. Dootsmann, for bringing that up. That's, there was a lot packed in there. I, I did wanna point out a couple of things that you mentioned. One is that they might not be, well, none of these people would be arrested if it's just for this type of offense, because it's all violations or infractions. Infractions, of course, are just always gonna be a ticket. Violations, uh, similar is always gonna be a ticket. People, I don't think are arrested for, for violations. It would be very, highly unusual. Um, because violations technically are not even a crime. There's no possible jail time. Um, but, so none, no one would be arrested for these, as the law currently stands. That said, the legislature, and this is something that we actually are very familiar with, the legislature has been looking at this issue as recently as this year. Senator Moi Waki actually introduced two bills specifically dealing with muffler noise, and they got all the way to conference, so they got, almost all the way to the end, um, almost to passing the legislature. She pushed very hard for them. Um, it would have increased fines, it would have created additional conditions for people to get their inspection, their safety inspection, um, various things that, that some of your legislators are really pushing for, um, to try to address this, um, at the statutory level. Um, and if people do feel that it should rise to the level of a crime, these muffler noise, there is room to have your legislators try to push for them instead of being a violation to perhaps being a crime, like a petty misdemeanor. And then, of course, it would just be up to a matter of public policy for the legislature to decide, based on everyone's input.
Okay, any board members, any other questions? And I'm running an hour late right now. Go ahead.
Let me brief again. Uh, this may be a question for the police. If, if a motorcycle's driving by and it's real loud, or, or a moped, can you grab their driver, their license plates and issue them a ticket through the mail? I mean
No.
You can't do that?
Yeah, we don't have that system.
Whether you don't, but can you?
I'm not aware that we can. I, I know we don't as a matter of practice, yeah. I, I don't believe there's a
Boy, I'll tell you what, you could set up on Kala Kala or Alamoana, one cop at one end of the street, one cop at the other end of the street. Get the license plates, and you'd probably get a hundred of them in a day. I mean, you, there's that many. It's that noisy and it's that loud. That's why everybody here is complaining.
Sure.
Just wondering if you could, whatever you can do to help. Thank you.
Okay. I do not see
I, I'm sorry. Uh, one more important piece of legislation that I wanted to bring up that was just passed and signed by the governor, I believe. There was actually a pilot project that was pushed by Department of Transportation, State Department of Transportation this year, to put up those noise detection machines. They're apparently been very successful in Paris and some of the other big cities. Um, even across the US are doing pilot projects as well. So I believe that was passed. There's not gonna be, at this point, there's no citations connected to them. It is purely a pilot project to see how the technology works, how the public reacts to it, and, and things of that nature. And they'll be reporting back to the legislature, I believe.
I'd like to thank everybody who came in tonight. Thank you very much. I'm, I'm certain that we didn't get the answers we wanted, but at least we know where the law is happening on these things. Thank you again, Major, and, uh, again, our condolences to the chief. Uh, next on the agenda, Board of Water Supply. She's gonna explain why it took so long to dig a hole and
Uh, good evening, Dominic Diaz with the Honolulu Board of Water Supply. I guess before we address the break, uh, we just wanted to remind everyone that we are in summer months. So as people attempt to irrigate ponds, uh, grassed areas, please be mindful of water usage. You know, we always try and remind people not to utilize irrigation between 9:00 AM, 5:00 PM. Uh, the Board of Water Supply has some extensive rebate programs right now for weather-based irrigation control systems, uh, rain barrel catchment systems. So if you go to our website, wwwboardofwatersupply.com, and you just type in, uh, rebates in the search box there, you can see things that are eligible for rebates. And, yeah, you know, unfortunately, after years of, uh, pretty good run in Waikiki, we did have the big twenty-four-inch break recently. You know, anytime you break a main that size, the damage can be extensive. The repairs are tricky. You know, you can't, on a line that size, you can't just slam a valve shut, unfortunately, to immediately turn off the water. You gotta really massage it slowly. If you just shut it real If you just shut it real quick, it'll create a water hammer that then kind of transverses back through the system, causing breaks throughout the rest of the system. So you gotta really do a slow closure. And I don't, I haven't received, I asked today, as recently as today, I haven't received any information on the suspected cause of the break, whether there was corrosion, or if there was some kind of a pinpoint, you know, another utility or something causing the break, or what exactly happened. But, you know, if and when I do, I will report that back to the board and the community. And at this time, I'd be happy to take any questions on behalf of the Board of Water Supply.
Questions for Board of Water Supply. Seeing none, but I'd like to, when you see Catherine Bahinui, please thank her for calling me every morning at 6:00 in the morning to report the damage, and at 10 o'clock to follow up. So, yes, she did a great job.
She doesn't, I don't, I'm not sure if she sleeps, so I apologize if she called you too early.
No problem.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
At this point, everyone who has not been sworn in as a member of the Waikiki Neighborhood Board will need you to take the oath of office, so we can continue with our agenda. If we can find the oath of office. No, just stay, just stay where you are. Okay. Please stand, raise your right hand.
Everybody stand and raise your right hand who hasn't taken the oath of office. I solemnly swear that I will faithfully support the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the state of Hawaii, the charter and laws of the city and county of Honolulu, and the provisions of the neighborhood plan, and will conscientiously and impartially discharge my duties to the best of my ability as a member of the Neighborhood Board, to which I have been elected. Congratulations.
At this time, sadly, Mark Smith has resigned from the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. I'm not sure the exact reason, but he did mention in passing that he has a lot of travel coming up, so that may be why he has left us. To fill that vacancy, I am looking for someone who can do that, and I see Catherine Henskey, former board member here, that lives in Sub District Three. I would like to nominate her to fill that vacant seat. Is there any other nominations to fill the vacant seat?
Thank you, Chair. I've been asked to nominate Catherine Lee. I've been asked to nominate Catherine Lee.
Are there any other nominations? Seeing two, we have two Catharines. Who is Catherine Lee? Catherine Lee. Okay. Catherine Lee, we have not met you before. Would you please say a few words? Tell us who you are.
Aloha, everyone. I'm Catherine Lee, and I live right here in Lily O'Kolani Gardens. I'm the vice president of the AOA. This is my second term, serving on the board for my community. And I've been coming regularly to the meetings of the Waikiki Neighborhood Board and reporting that information back to our monthly board meetings, so our community can understand what's happening with all of the laws and all the things that we're talking about. I have my education from the University of Hawaii and also from Columbia University in higher education, and I've lived in this state for 43 years. And I have quite a good sense of the issues, not only in Waikiki, but throughout the state. I am a conflict resolutionist. I serve as a volunteer mediator at the Mediation Center of the Pacific. So that gives me a really excellent opportunity to understand the issues and concerns that people are facing on a daily basis in our community. I am also a leadership and communication coach. I work within higher education, as well as individual people who are trying to improve their lives and reach higher goals. And I would be very honored to serve on the Neighborhood Board and to do whatever I could to address these issues that we've heard tonight, like noise and homelessness, which is all around us. So I would really appreciate your vote, and thank you very much for giving me the opportunity to say a few words. Thank you.
Thank you. Catherine. Ms. Henskey, would you care to say a few words, please?
Hi there. As you know, I've served on the board for a number of years. Unfortunately, in February, I had heart failure, ended up in the hospital. And for the past several months, I've been in the hospital off and on, so I was unable to complete my profile. Nonetheless, many people voted, and I'm really very grateful. Waikiki is my life. It's the only place I've ever wanted to live since I was eight years old. I hope that my faithful service and the fact that I've been here for so many years will serve me in good stead. I'm a member of the Waikiki Rotary, and we do a lot of work right here. Some of the tables here, you'll see, are new because we provided them. And we've done part of the food, and that's all something that I'm very involved in. So I hope with all my heart that you'll vote for me, and thank you for giving me this opportunity.
Since we have two candidates, our neighborhood assistant will call the role, who you vote for. Vote by Lee or Henskey.
Okay. Aloha, members. What I will do is I will do a roll call vote, and you can name the person, Henskey or Lee that you're voting for, because they're both Catharines. Okay? All right. So, Member Anderson? Okay. Member Boyack? Okay. Member Brown? Member Dabs? Member Dool Dulao?
Lee.
Lee. Okay. Vice Chair, or, Member Erdecheck?
Catherine Henskey.
Okay. Member Philek? Member Finley? Member Jacob Daniel? Member Jacob Ken? Member Mers? Member Miss, sorry. Member Miss Kayin? Miss Akian, sorry? Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you. Members Snyder?
Henskey.
Henskey, sorry. And Member Worth?
I'm Lee.
Okay, we have three for Lee. And we have 11 for Member Henskey. So, Member Henskey wins. Thank you.
Ms. Lee, thank you very much for volunteering, and we appreciate everything you do for our community. Thank you.
I solemnly swear that I will faithfully support the Constitution and the laws of the United States of America, the Constitution and laws of the state of Hawaii, the charter and laws of the city and county of Honolulu, and the provisions of the neighborhood plan. I will conscientiously and impartially discharge my duties to the best of my ability as a member of the Neighborhood Board, to which I have been elected. Thank you, and thank you, everybody.
We come now to the part of the agenda to elect officers. Is there a nomination for Chair of the Neighborhood Board?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Robert Finley for Chair.
Okay. Is there a second to that nomination? Are there any other nominations? Okay. Then I don't think we need a roll call, right? No. Okay. Well, then, all in favor of Bob Finley for Chair, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay. It's unanimous.
Thank you very much, and condolences to me. Do I have a nomination for Vice Chair?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Louis Erdecheck.
Are there any additional nominations for Vice Chair? Seeing none, show of hands in favor of Lou Erdecheck? Any opposed? Any abstentions? I show unanimous support. Subdistrict, currently Sub District One, Vice Chair is Jeff Mers. Are there any nominations for Sub District One besides Jeff Mers?
I'm going to agree with Jeff.
Okay. And second for Robert. Any other nominations? All those in favor, a show of hands for Jeff Mers, Sub District One. Thank you. Sub District Two, this is, we don't have anybody who has been a Sub District Two Chair or Vice Chair. Does anybody want to volunteer for Sub District Two?
I nominate Greg.
Any?
I nominate Greg.
Greg.
A second.
Nomination is second. Any other nominations? Yes. I'm sorry. No. Daniel? Okay. We have two now. Any other nominations? Nominations are closed. We'll do a roll call vote for Vice Chair, Sub District Two. How do you want to do that?
So we're going to do a roll call vote for Vice Chair, Sub District Two, which basically is in charge of being the representative of Sub District Two. When we have our agenda, you would be the one that will talk about what's going on in your sub-district. So what we're going to do is, I'm going to call your name, and then you're going to vote whether it's going to be Miss, oh, gosh, I'm so sorry, Member, Miss Akian, and also Member Daniel Jacob. Okay? So, Member Anderson. Member Boyack. Miss, Miss, you're going to, okay. Member Brown.
Akian.
Okay. Member Dabs? Member Dool Dulao?
Aye.
Member Erdecheck? Vice Chair Erdecheck?
Greg.
Okay. Member Philek? Chair Finley?
Oh, Greg.
Daniel Jacob?
Jacob.
Okay. Member Jacob Ken? Jeff Mers? Member Mers? Okay. Okay. And Member Miss Akian? Member Snyder?
Akian.
And Member Worth?
Akian, all the way.
And Member Henskey?
I have a question. I've always voted for Chairman. I've always voted for Chairman.
No, we've always voted for, all members have voted for sub-districts.
Okay. All right. So, Jacob. Okay. So I have 11, 11 for Miss Akian, and I have four for Jacob. So I have, so, Member Miss Akian wins.
And for Sub District Three, is anybody in Sub District Three being nominated for Vice Chair?
Yeah, I'd like to nominate Michael Brown.
I'm sorry?
Uh, Michael Brown.
Michael Brown, yeah. My hearing aids are not quite perfect tonight.
Can I nominate Catherine Henskey? Can I nominate Catherine Henskey?
And so, Henskey, okay. Any, any other nominations for Sub District Two?
Sub District Three.
Three. It's been a long night. Pardon me. So nominations for Sub District Three are closed. Judy Ann will take the roll call vote.
Okay. Same as before. Member Anderson. Member Boyack. Member Brown. Member Dabs? Member Dool Dulao? Vice Chair Erdecheck? Member Philek? Chair Finley? Okay. Member Henskey? Member Jacob Daniel?
Jacob.
Okay. Member Jacob Ken? Member Mers? Member Miss, oh, goodness, I'm so sorry. I don't know why I'm knocking it, but. Miss Akian? Oh, goodness, I'm so sorry. Member Snyder? Member Worth?
Who was the other person?
So it was Brown or Henskey?
Oh, I'm going to vote for you.
Okay.
You can't have a zero vote. Come on.
So Member Brown has two votes, and Member Henskey has one. 13 votes. So Member Henskey wins for Sub District Three, Vice Chair. Thank you.
We have the position of Secretary that is open. Unfortunately, our current Secretary, Lisa, has not returned from the mainland yet. And noting how many notes you took, Sarah, at the swear-in ceremony, since you write a lot, I wondered if you would be willing to take the Secretary position.
Chair Finley, I would be honored.
Are there any other nominations for Secretary? Lisa is still on the mainland, tending to her ailing parents. She had hoped to be back soon, but every day it seems like it's going to be longer and longer, and I hate to put her to work while she is still taking care of all of that. So seeing no more nominations.
Actually, Member Cabanera needs to be present in order for her to be nominated. Sorry.
So seeing no, are there any other nominations? I'm sorry. Seeing none, all those in favor of Sarah picking up. Seeing none, all those in favor of Sarah picking up? Any opposed? You don't count. Unanimous, thank you very much. And Judy Ann will get you a list of everyone's email addresses so you can distribute information as necessary. We no longer have a treasurer. Okay, next on our agenda, meeting time, place, and rules. The city has a contract with this building to give us one month, or two and a half hours every month, including parking and the whole thing. Our only other alternative I can think about would be the Alaway Golf Course Clubhouse, which is not convenient for a lot of us who walk into this meeting, but I would accept that as an alternate. In fact, I think if this building burns down, that's where we'll be for a while. So does anybody have an objection to continuing meeting here at the Waikiki Community Center?
If we continue having our meetings here, would WebEx be a possibility? Having a hybrid? Having both options available?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you over the clapping.
Oh, sorry. I was, I just wanted to make sure that if we continued having our meetings here, it's possible to have WebEx also, so that we have WebEx and in-person available.
Oh, okay, this is separate, that's a separate issue. But.
But that's available here too, then?
Yeah, I was going to get into that in just a moment. So.
So right now, the ruling is, or the voting is for just having it here. We can do the Ola Lo thing.
Sure, I just wanted to make sure, because I heard at the swearing-in ceremony that there was an issue about having the Wi-Fi. But, but that's not going to be an issue. I just want to make sure on the record that it's not an issue. Okay, great, then I'm okay with it, as long as that's a, okay, perfect, thank you.
That was the next thing on my agenda to discuss. So we will continue having the meetings here, even if this is the base for a hybrid meeting, which is required by what law?
So technically, we need to have an in-person place, an in-person location, first of all. To have WebEx is a option, but if it's something that the Board would like to vote on, to have both in-person and online as an option, that's something that the Board can vote.
Last year, after WebEx failed us three times at meetings, the current Board voted not to do any more electronic support and meetings. But I'm now in Secretary. I understand the city has purchased more equipment. The problem was, the equipment they had, this computer and the hotspot, if I'm not mistaken, after an hour to an hour and 15 minutes, shut down. So we would have people like Lou when he was in, home with COVID. He could hear everything going on, but we could not see Lou on the screen or on the computer. So I'm more than willing to take your advice if we want to do a hybrid meeting using the systems provided by the city. But should it continue to fail, I think we would have to look at it carefully, whether to continue doing that. So Board members, would you prefer to do hybrid meetings next year? I'd like a show of hands, who would like to do hybrid? It seems like we've got at least nine.
Chair, can I just make a motion?
Just, go ahead.
I move to make our meetings hybrid moving forward.
You can, yes, you can make that motion. Is there a second to that motion? Any further discussion from the Board members?
Yeah, sure, can I speak on my motion? I think this is pretty given. You know, this Board's impact really is directly related to how many people we can bring into this room. And if we can expand the borders of our room to include something that we all are familiar with now, we're bringing more people into this room. And that will make us more powerful, and it will make us more persuasive. And so I think we have to do everything we can to encourage participation, not limited. Thank you.
I appreciate Chair Finley, oh, sorry.
As you can see, I'm not quite adept with all these mufangled things. During the meetings that we had, there was a lot of upset because people could not get in to speak. And matter of fact, Lou was one of the people that, you know, got very frustrated. And I think, I agree that you want to bring more people in. But I have to tell you, I think this is the best Neighborhood Board of all of the Neighborhood Boards. We get tremendous participation, thanks to people that are here. Sometimes Board members won't be able to show up, and so they're on the WebEx, that's fine. But nonetheless, I think with in-person returning, we've had more people show up, more Board members show up, and I think our attendance is up. So I'm against it.
Thank you, Sarah?
So one thing I do have to say is that, for me, it's more of a civil rights issue also. Because by not having WebEx available, you know, the thing is that younger people, minorities, they work two, three jobs. You know, and it's great because right now, the way it's, if it's in-person only, you're right, we do have people that participate, but it's the same people that participate. We're not opening it up to a wider range of people, a wider demographic. And Waikiki is very diverse. So I'd like to see younger people, I would like to see minorities, I would like to see women be able to be more involved. So we'd like to have WebEx just be an option. And if it fails, as Mr. Finley said in the past it has, then we'll reevaluate it. But we should move forward. Thank you.
Mike?
Well, will there be any recommendation that Board members be physically present then, so that we're here for our meetings? I would, I would always come to this, this place for the meeting.
Yeah, I hear what everybody's saying as far as access for people who work a couple of jobs and the whole, it's difficult. So I would be agreeable to, to the participants outside of the Board having access via WebEx, a lot of people can't make it in. I'm a huge proponent of us being physically here, interacting, and breathing on our elected officials and agency representatives, because there's real, there's a lot of nuances, a lot of stuff that go on when you're face-to-face. So I think the Board, that's why we're elected on this. So we should be able to make time, and we know when the meetings are. So let's, let's step up on this Board. But I agree, the public, you guys are busy, but we need your input. And as someone said, the more participation we have, the more power we have. So I'm all for the public, but I think the Board needs to step up and show face.
I mean, I'm not opposed to the, to the hybrid meetings, but, but I will say that we should be aware that there is a potential unintended consequence. And I think that, and I think that there's no doubt that it started when we did the, when we did the online meetings during COVID, and then when we went back to in-person, basically, the police just never showed up, the fire department never showed up. A lot of our elected officials didn't show up. And so be careful what we ask for. It is, I mean, part of the value of this is that you get to have, and like Senator Murawaki is really good, and Councilmember Waters is, but there is a potential unintended consequence that people outside of the Board that, that you want here are not going to show up. So just be aware of that before, you know, and maybe we should do it as a trial period and see what happens with, you know, with the option to revisit the issue. Because there is a lot of value in having the police here and the elected officials and the informal interaction, and you don't want to lose that, obviously. But yes, I agree, there are people who can't come or don't want to come, and we are disenfranchising them by not allowing them to observe and participate. So I'm very sympathetic to that.
Well, and just, sorry, but also the agency reps and the elected officials, we would expect them to be in-person as well. The only people who'd be exempt from that would be the public, but that's what I'd like to see. Agency reps here, and, and all of us, and, and elected officials still be required to come in.
That's, I'm sorry, that's what I meant to say, I'm sorry. So I'm glad you gentlemen both clarified, because that's, or three gentlemen both clarified. Because absolutely, I think we should be present. I think our elected officials should be present. I think, you know, our speakers should be present, but the public should have the option. So, yeah.
Chair, in the interest of time, because we are running over, could we table this until the next meeting?
Can I weigh in, or can I just say my opinion? Okay, so just to let you guys know, in the past, like, for example, my Hawaii Kai Board, they did a three-month trial. So they, they did it for three months, and then they revisited it after the three months. If it didn't work out, then we can go back in-person. They did have stipulations about all members having to be present at their, at their in-person location unless there's some situations such as COVID or any kind of serious sickness. They do expect all elective officials to come to their meeting as well. So that's what we did with Hawaii Kai. We actually had it for three months, and then we revisited, and then we did it again. So that's an option.
I have a motion on the floor, it's been seconded. Would I have to amend my motion to include that? Is that what Hawaii Kai has been doing? To include those specifics? Because I'm, I'm agreeable to amend my motion to those.
So the current motion is to try this for three months, doing hybrid meetings.
On the stipulation that all our agencies will be present in person, our Board members will be present in person, our elected officials will be present in person.
Okay.
And the option if one of us are sick. I, I'm kind of against the three-month trial, I want this to be permanent, but.
I get the feeling that people want to do this, so I'll take a vote. Show of hands, all in favor of Daniel's motion. Any opposed? See it. Was there an opposition? Okay. Okay, last two things on this. This Board normally recesses in December. And in June of 2024, we will be, we cannot meet on King Kamehameha Day because it is a state holiday. This facility, as well as the Neighborhood Commission, will not be working that night. So unless there's opposition to, I don't know how we'd have a meeting without the Neighborhood Assistant and without the, the building. So we're required to meet nine times a year. So this would still give us 10 meetings a year. Yes? Well, I'd like to give everybody the opportunity to plan for their year. I was here for three December meetings, and nobody showed up. We did not have quorum, we had nobody. Yeah. So is anybody opposed to recessing those two months? You're opposed. Okay, thank you. Okay, we're running only about an hour behind. So what I'd like to do is, very quickly, we have two resolutions on. Did everybody get a copy of both resolutions? Remember, we supported trash pickups after 6:00 a.m. by motion. I know. And we, we ran out of people to vote on Greg's resolution supporting consumer protection bills for condo owners. So I'd like to do the trash pickup first. I think we were, well, the last Board supported this unanimously. And it was just a matter of getting it here when we had a quorum. So is there any discussion on this bill, or this resolution, picking up trash after 6:00 a.m., letting people sleep? So is, I don't see anybody nodding against that. Yes, Catherine?
We've talked about this for at least a year. So I move that we go ahead and vote on this.
So there's a motion on the floor to accept the resolution supporting to prevent trash pickup, commercial trash pickup before 6:00 a.m., and a second. Does anybody have any discussion, Board members? Seeing none, show of hands, all in favor? Any opposed? Motion passes? Shifting. Okay. Greg has been discussing this resolution supporting consumer protection bills for condo owners. Basically, he's rewritten what we had out earlier. I attempted to get this out to everybody for review to see if you agreed with all the wheresses or wanted to change any. Does anybody not seen this? Catherine, you have not seen this? If you haven't seen it, he says, whereas the establishment of a condominium ombudsman has been proposed to aid in the resolution of condominium-related disputes. And he goes on to several wheresses. I had hoped that everybody would have gotten, you got your copy in the emails, didn't you?
Yeah. Yeah, we got copies. Anybody else see the resolution?
There should be a copy floating down. It's very, we're just asking for a follow-up on it.
Does anybody need a copy? I have one, but I need to get it back. Does anybody?
And Bob, just a question, who initiated this, or what's the impetus behind this resolution?
Greg, could you explain the, the resolution?
So the resolution came out of legislation that we had proposed initially and got through as two bills. And the two bills that are in process right now, we're hoping that they're going to get through in 2024, are similar, but one is related specifically to condominiums, and one is related to all-inclusive. There's HOAs and planned community associations and condominiums. And what brought it out is, there's quite a bit going on in the state. There's management companies that are unlicensed, in some cases recently, not doing their due diligence. There's deferred maintenance, there's many, many issues, you know, and I detailed that last time in the last meeting, on April 11th. And what we're trying to do is just have a fair and even playing field for all owners and Board members, associations, the AOAOs, to go to a one-stop shop to be able to resolve their, their, resolve their issues, concerns, statutes, if there's a concern with a statute within HRS 514B, or any law within the state that's not, you know, not being complied with. As opposed to going through mediation, which actually costs a lot more money than people realize. There's a $375 filing fee, in addition to attorneys that get involved and then litigating. So it's just having a state ombudsman that will just having a state ombudsman that will be able to support that, and not have to go through the legal process. And that's, that's the intent. The resolution was passed recently by the Alamoana Kakaako Neighborhood Board in February, and it's going to be making its rounds through all the neighborhood boards eventually.
I, I didn't, I only got this tonight. In reading it, reading this, I'm very fortunate, because I live in a building with a great manager, but is there a license requirement for a manager of a condo building to have a license?
No, there isn't. There is a license requirement for the management company, but not the community managers.
So, what I'm reading here is that it's a mandate for community managers. So, you're, you're asking for lic- licensure of community managers? Is that what you're asking for?
So, it's just a suggestion. These, this is just a resolution for suggestions going forward. The ombudsman measure has already been presented, and I'm going to do a revision on it for the 2024 session, for an additional one. But in this case, we're trying to get either certification or some kind of licensing, just like a sales, real estate sales agent. They have to be licensed. These community managers are overseeing millions and millions of dollars, like hundreds of millions of dollars, each of them, of property value. And the only license that's required is a broker's license. There's a broker sitting behind the management company, and they don't even get involved in the day-to-day operation. They basically sign off on the contract, and then they're out of the picture. So, it's, it's people that aren't licensed that we're dealing with on a regular basis.
Right. So, let me be clear. It is not a mandate for a license for the person who is managing the building. It is a mandate for the representative of, let's say, Hawaiianah. Is that what you're asking for?
Can you?
It reads.
I gave my copy away, so if you could read this again.
Okay. Mandate licensure of association community managers to verify competency and ensure accountability and compliance with rules, laws, and professional standards.
Correct. So.
My question is, who is the person you're asking?
Yeah. So, you have a community manager that's overseeing your association, I'm assuming, correct? Someone that represents the management company and oversees your association. It goes to the board meetings.
Correct.
Okay. That's the person that we're hoping will get licensed or certified, one or the other. You know, there can be a certification level. Right now, you can come off the street. You could be a gardener. You could be a garbage collector. You could be whatever you want, and you could end up being a community manager, and overseeing the property and the issues of, you know, millions of dollars of loans, contractors, day-to-day operation issues that go on in the building.
And forgive me, Greg, I really don't mean to be blunt, but this is not the management association person that represents. That's not what you're talking about? Yeah, it's not that, is it?
So, it would be the people that work for Hawaiianah, the people that work for Asocia.
Okay. So, it's not the building manager that you're?
No, no, no. It's not the resident manager or the site manager.
Okay, thank you.
I support the resolution. I think that there's a lot of good things in here. I mean, well, I was an AOAO president for about four years, and it was sort of a thankless job. But that, but that aside, I mean, we didn't really have, I didn't really notice a lot of the problems that the resolution is trying to get at, but I've talked to enough people and read enough, and I've heard enough, that I do understand that there are people in the community who do have concerns. And so, I think this would give them an extra layer of protection by having the ombudsman to go to. I think that, I think that's a good idea. I think to Catherine's question, I think the way that would probably play out, I mean, any, anytime, I mean, this is just a recommendation that would go to the legislature, right? So, what would happen is that anytime the legislature is going to mandate the licensure of some kind of a profession that's not currently licensed, then the legislative auditor has to do what they call a sunrise review, where they, they look at the pros and the cons, and the costs and the benefits, and things like that. So, there's many layers that before this would actually happen. But I think, I think the intent behind the resolution is to have a little more quality control over who's dealing with, with, you know, with the money and the finances that the condo has, and so forth. So, we could probably quibble with a couple of whereas's here and there, but I think basically the intent is a good one. So, I certainly support it that way.
Chair, can I make a couple comments? I, I kind of am in line with Lou here. I, I don't really care for any of the whereas's, but I like the be it resolved. So, I would hope to be able to offer an amendment, assuming this was, became a motion, resolution before this body. But I'd like to strike all the whereas's and provide, whereas the Waikiki Neighborhood Board believes that more can be done to address the issues within condominium association, therefore be it resolved, that the legislator consider the following and provide it. That, that's what I would like to see.
That would have to be approved by the motion maker.
Of course. But you don't even have a motion right now, by the way.
I thought we had a motion.
I make a motion to pass the resolution as is.
I second that motion, please.
Any further discussion?
So, I would like to make that amendment. I move to amend the resolution by striking all the whereas's and providing one whereas that simply says, the Waikiki Neighborhood Board believes that more can be done to address condominium association issues.
There's a secondary motion on the floor. Is there a second for that motion? There's a second. Any discussion on that matter?
I guess I'll explain very briefly. You know, a couple of these things. First of all, there's a lot of accusations against the Department of Commerce and Consumer Affairs, and I don't think that's warranted. They're, they have regulation that they are laws. I think the resolution is asking for those laws to be increased. So, it's nothing to do with the current laws and RICO's enforcement of them. It's their limited ability to do so. As to elimination, eliminating mediation, as a litigator myself, I can tell you firsthand the amount of effort and resources and time that it takes to go to trial. Mediation's there for a purpose. If you think you're spending a lot of money on mediation, you should go to trial and see how that works out for you. So, all of these, as Lou indicated, are somewhat problematic, but the, the be it resolved, I think, is, I stand by. So, I think it's stronger if we take a stance on what we want to see be done, and agree that, we agree on that, as opposed to squabble about why we all agree about the same thing. Thank you.
Thank you. There's a motion to amend. Any further discussion on the motion to amend? All those in favor of the motion to amend, show of hands. All those opposed to the motion to amend? You know what? We're almost out of time tonight. I'm going to make, I'd like to table this motion till the next meeting, give everybody a chance, and we will get it on the next agenda.
If I could, Chair, I would like to ask that the original resolution be voted on, and if you give me the opportunity, I can read what I had read the last time on April 11th, and almost had passed with eight members out of 10 voting for it.
I think we had nine.
So, if you have time for that. And then I would like to vote on the resolution as it is written. I'm really surprised at what's going on at the moment.
I think you have to deal with the amendment to the resolution before you dial the resolution itself.
Okay. So, I didn't get the count on those to support the amendment?
As written.
As written. Okay. Those, I'll get one more count. Those who voted to support the amendment, please raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five. The motion fails. It needed nine votes to pass. Show of hands to support the original motion?
As written.
As written. One, two, three.
Seven, eight, nine.
Nine. That's, that's a quorum.
So, it's nine votes for as is the resolution. Thank you.
Okay. We've got a few minutes to be here. Nola, the mayor's representative, are you still here with us, Nola? Oh, there she is.
Good evening. Oops. Good evening, Chair Finley, and members of the Neighborhood Board. Thank you so much for having me. I'm Nola Miyazaki. I'm the mayor's representative for the Waikiki Neighborhood Board. We, we didn't meet last month, so I'll just give a, sort of a brief update of the last news for the last two months. So, our most exciting news is the opening of the rail last, over the, just before the Fourth. And so, we've had several thousand riders, and we had thousands and thousands over the Fourth of July weekend. So, we're really excited about that. And I think, hopefully, as it moves closer to town, we'll, we'll have more riders, and that'll help a lot of our, our friends in Kapolei and on the West Side. One thing that I think everyone would be interested is, the, the mayor signed the city council's $3.4 billion operating budget for the 2024 fiscal year, and there was a historic property tax relief for 152,000 qualifying homeowners on Oahu. There's a one-time $350 tax credit, thank you to the mayor, to Chair Waters, and the city council. It, the, the total cost will be approximately $53 million. But what that means is that $350 tax credit equates to a reduction of $100,000 off the value of your home. So, it's not insignificant. And hopefully, in this day and time, with the, with the increasing and fluctuating real property tax values, that will be helpful to the residents. I did want to also, in, in the budget, I thought the, that you all would be interested to see that there is $15.4 million for homelessness initiatives, and $170 million for affordable housing, including acquisition and construction. And I think that, along with the opening of the EV-Lay Resource Center, where there are beds for almost 20 homeless individuals at a time, those will be, those initiatives and the transfer of people to EV-Lay Center and into, hopefully, housing solutions will be driven by CORE, partly by CORE, which is the city's initiative for homelessness. So, just in Waikiki, I know that's a, a chronic problem, and hopefully, some of these initiatives in the budget will help alleviate some of those issues. The, just to recap on what, what was brought up two months ago, the complete streets, there was, there was a discussion about the small percentage of bikes recorded on the Alawai Boulevard, and when is DTS going to make the final decision to implement the bike lane? And the DTS did give a long explanation. I'm not sure, I, I should need to read it, but basically, they're still studying it. And, you know, they are, this is federal-funded initiatives for complete streets all over the island, and they feel that, given the ridership and the demand from other public surveys, there is a demand for, for more safer bikeways in Waikiki, that more people would use bikeways if, if we could make it more, if the city would make it more safe. I know it was a topic that was brought up at, at the mayor's Alawai clubhouse, town hall. So, I think it's still under review. I'm not sure what the final, or when the final decision will, will be made by DTS, but it is still under review. And I think the project, basically, what Director Morton is saying is that the project is really a couple of years in development and more feedback from the community. There was also a question about unsafe tide boats in the marina, and I feel like we might have answered this, but basically, the Neighborhood Commission said the harbor questions and issues should be referred to the Hawaii State Department of Transportation through the board's governor's representative. So, for that particular question, please, can we seek out the governor's representative for that? Other than that, we have some, you know, we're really into the summer, and we've opened up a couple new pools in central Oahu, also as, in response to the mayor's town hall. So, there's more information in the mayor's newsletter, as all, as you can find it on oneowahu.org. I'm happy to answer any questions, if there are questions.
Just a second. Board members?
Yeah, I'll keep it real fast. Nola, do you know when they're going to start the construction of our pedestrian bridge over the Alawai? That should be started as soon as possible, right?
I don't know what the timing is, but we can find out, yes. But it has, the project is going forward, and has been funded.
Great, thank you.
Renee told me 2025 would be construction starting, and she took federal officials on a bike ride down the Alawai, and they gave her $25 million for the project, because they were terrified.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you for coming, Nola. Just got a couple of quick comments here. One, I know it was talked about earlier that Waikiki is getting private security to help bolster HPD. I'm a little bit wary about that. I don't particularly like the idea that we are partially privatizing what should be a public service for law enforcement. And I'm concerned that, you know, lacking any real police or law enforcement powers, this isn't really going to lead to much change, and it's still going to be called, you know, you're still going to have to overtax HPD to respond to these incidents. So, I don't really think that's a real fix for what needs to be going on. I know the city is notoriously unfriendly in its hiring processes, unfortunately. There's still a lot of vacant positions. The process is slow and cumbersome. I think the mayor and the city council need to be focusing on reforming that process. Also, I don't know what it's going to take, but I think the mayor needs to make clear that Waikiki needs 24/7, 365 foot patrols across the whole neighborhood. We heard earlier, a lot of, now, we've had a lot of success recently about reducing crime and making improvements to the community, but we, I think we need to keep the pressure on. Right now is not the time to let up, and we need to lock in the gains that we've made. So, we need a more persistent, on-the-ground HPD walking the streets consistently. They don't need their cop cars. There's usually not a big crisis where you have to respond, and when there is crises happening, officers are able to flood HPD and cars from around the city in minutes. I've seen it. We've all seen it. We just need to get them on the street. And then, one final note, I think we really missed an opportunity when we named the rail project the Skyline. We have the bus. It should have been the rail. That's my two cents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, there's a couple questions there, and Gideon will help me. We'll, we'll respond to all of them next meeting. But I did want to mention, too, I forgot to mention that, as you all are probably aware, the Kohio Beach closure is now two hours longer from midnight to 5:00 a.m. It doesn't prohibit people from crossing the beach to go into the water, but hopefully, that'll alleviate some of the crime between 12:00 and 2:00 a.m. And I'm not familiar with the background for the private security, but we will get back to you with more answers about that.
Tim?
Hey, Nola.
Hi, Tim.
Everybody, I've been working on this for 15 years, and it's finally happened, and it's only because of Mayor Blongiardi and a bunch of people. Father Lane at St. Augustine is going to stop feeding and enabling our riffraff down here. Friday will be the last day. Tell Rick thank you. You know, this has been a long process. Used to be you couldn't even walk down the street on Oahu. I've worked with Carlisle, Caldwell, now Blongiardi. He's the only one that's gotten it done. And it's taken a long time, but he's tenacious. He's, and we are so happy. The private security, doing a great job down here, along with Fourth Watch on HPD and everything. Things have turned around so much. And I'm the one that complains more than any of you people, okay? For me, I taught John, for me to see this is enlightening. You know, we're all here criticizing all these people all the time, but when they do something, and it's good, we have to, we have to, you know, admit it, and we got to give them kudos. This thing has taken forever. You can, I've spent probably 1,000 hours. You can, I've spent probably 1,000 hours on this. And for, to see it actually come to fruition is marvelous. Tell them thank you.
Thank you, Tim. We'll definitely let them know. Thank you.
I don't see any more hands to talk to the mayor's representative. Nola, thank you for being with us all this long night.
Thank you.
Council Chair Waters, welcome. You didn't hear the part about a hybrid meeting because we still want you to come here.
Absolutely. Good evening, everyone. First and foremost, congratulations to everyone for your election. You are now elected officials. You know, I know a bunch of you did not come to the swearing in. I just want to encourage you and hope that you stay on the board because the swearing in is actually a pretty cool thing. There was at least four council members there and the mayor actually came and gave a pretty good talk. It could have been organized a little bit better, I will admit that, but it was still a really, really cool event. Thank you, Nola, for talking about long-term tax relief. On the mayor's desk right now is two bills, Bill 37 and Bill 40. Bill 37 caps your property taxes at 3% of your income if you make $80,000 or less. You got to apply by September 30th though, folks. So keep that in mind and those of you watching on O'Lelo, September 30th. This is assuming that the mayor signs the bill though, but I feel fairly confident that he's going to sign the bill. But this really helps low-income earners because we want to keep people in their homes and apartments and we don't want property taxes to keep them from, from being able to live in Hawaii. By the way, property taxes is the way that the city generates revenue. Fees and fines are just a really small part of the revenue generation. So it really is property taxes. We always have to be conscious of that. The other bill, Bill 40, increases the homeowner's exemption for everyone who owns a home or an apartment from $100,000 to $120,000. And for Kupuna, if you're 65 years of age or older, it increases your homeowner's exemption from $140,000 to $160,000, right? Those are on the mayor's desk. Again, we want the mayor to sign that. Coupled with Bill 14, as Nola pointed out, that's a one-time $350 tax credit for every homeowner with a homeowner's exemption. And then Reso 23-33, which we passed last month, gives homeowners who own second homes, hopefully who rent it out to other local people, a tax break. So I encourage you folks, if you have any further questions, to either ask me or you can look up these bills. They're actually pretty cool. And if you feel as I do, maybe you can give the mayor a call and say, hey, mayor, we like Bill 37 and Bill 40, please pass it. I do want to talk about, real quick, I know we're running out of time, but you know, the Kalakaua street closures, I noticed in your, in your agenda, just look at all of them, right? And I've been getting complaints from the businesses who are no longer getting like restaurants. People aren't coming into the restaurants. They're not supporting the restaurants because people are on the, on the street. Plus, it's, can be a nuisance for local people living in Waikiki who can't get home, right? So I took a look at this, right? What's, the ordinance allows for legacy events, like that's an event that's always happened. So right now there's 14 legacy events. Yeah? So basically we can't do anything about that unless I legislate that, which is what I wanted to talk to you folks about. Then the second one is free speech events. We can't limit free speech events. But the ordinance says that we can limit the other events to 12, right? I'm just, I went through the whole list that I wrote this all down in my own handwriting. We're already up to 11, yeah? So this number 12 would be the Konikapila Waikiki Festival on August 5th. Excuse me, number 11 would, number 10 is Endless Summer Festival, July 1st. Then Waikiki Summer Festival, July 15th is number 11. And then number 12 would be Konikapila Waikiki Festival. There's a lot of them on the website where people have already applied and it says permit pending. I got to talk to the administration to say, does that mean, Department of Transportation Services, does that mean that none of the rest of these events are going to be permitted? Arguably, they shouldn't be because they're only allowed 12. But I'd like to hear from the board whether or not you folks want me to change the law. If you don't want all these events, cut them down to less events, let me know, yeah? The other thing I wanted to point out, and it's in my newsletter, that Parks and Recreation is making significant rule changes dealing with the use of courts. I'm trying to think how many courts you folks have here in Waikiki, but you know, just because you live in Waikiki, you might play tennis, pickleball, basketball on other courts. The fact of the matter is, we have private lessons on public courts and there's a, there's a user issue with that, right? That people are complaining that this is going on. So Parks and Recreation is taking a survey and trying to find out from park users whether or not we should make a rule change and either prohibit the private lessons in public courts or give them a time and place to do it, right? Which would probably be the most reasonable thing, but when is the best time and place to do it? I think what the rule change is contemplating, that if you have a certain amount of courts, like four or more, then you can have private lessons there. But if you look at most of our parks, you got two courts in many, many places, so private lessons would be prohibited. I went to a couple of the mayor's town hall meetings that he, and people came up and said, hey, look, like my little girl can't play tennis with her tennis coach because it's going to be prohibited. I was, ooh, what do you do? You never think about it until you see the little girl saying, yeah, I can't play tennis anymore. But weigh in on that, please. It's in my, in my newsletter. Go to the website and please weigh in. Next, sprinklers, yeah? There's an ordinance requiring that your building have sprinklers. Of course, I think it was in the 70s, they changed the law which required it, but there's still a lot of buildings without sprinklers. You can get around the sprinkler law if you pass what's called a life, life safety analysis.
Evaluation.
Evaluation. Thank you so much, the lawyer in the house.
A O A O.
Yeah, so these things are very, very expensive and people have talked to me and said, Tommy, can you repeal that? Because nobody can pass this life-saving analysis. People can't pass it, mostly because I'm finding that, you know, you have pipes that go from one floor to the other and there's a gap around it? They can't fill that gap adequately enough to pass it. This is what I've been told, right? But either way, that's what I've been told, that they can't pass it. So if they can't pass it, they got a sprinkler. The A O A O lobbyist has asked me to repeal that law. So I'm open and want to listen to you folks and I've actually asked the lobbyist to take me through the various buildings. I want to hear from the residents themselves whether or not they want this repealed. That's a big deal, right? That's it for now and I'm available for questions.
Don't see questions, but I have one. No, you've had your turn. We have to get out of here, you know that.
I did hear his questions though and I'm happy to talk to you offline.
Is Bill 20 going to impact Waikiki?
Remind me which?
Parking, parking in residential areas?
Oh, so Bill 20 is residential parking zones where you can basically get a permit to park on the street. It's somewhat controversial. I'm working on a draft right now because folks want it for free and it's just not really doable to do it for free. DTS wants to charge at least $200 per permit, so that's what my committee draft does. There's the issue of maintenance of the road, right? And honestly, I don't think it's a very good idea to do this, privatizing roads, but we'll see. I don't, so the answer to your question is, I don't know where the other members stand on that.
WTMA once promised us they were going to do something for residents parking after 6:00 PM when the readers went on till 10:00 PM. So I'll get, I'll twist that tail. And I do have a copy of the motion we made prior to COVID about reducing the number of street events. I believe we asked for one street event off the legacy per trimester. But I'll dig that up and get it to you.
Okay, terrific. Thank you.
We did discuss that in the past and really felt there were too many street events. Any other?
Council Chair.
Yes.
The vote tonight by this board represents the collective voices of nearly 30,000 residents of this neighborhood. We are telling you once again that those of us who are impacted by the early morning trash pickup, as early as 2:30 AM, want to be treated equally like yourself and others who have their trash picked up by the city at 6:00 AM. We need a law, we need it now. We've asked you for 18 months, you've had my first letter on this issue. And when I did my right-to-know request, you had only contacted the private refuse companies one time in 18 months. We need action, we need now. We need to have our dignity respected, just like you and all the others who have their trash picked up by the city at 6:00 AM.
Thank you. I just have a question for you, actually. These are private haulers, right?
Correct.
Could the A O A O themselves say, look, don't come and pick up my garbage until 6:00 o'clock?
You're absolutely right. You're absolutely right. We have an issue here in which we have those who dominate, those who manipulate, those who instill fear, those two companies that you're talking about. And on the other end, we have those who allow it. My focus is on those who allow it. That's why I have written over 15,000 words to the city council because the city council is allowing this to happen. And I also agree with you that the condominium owners or their boards also, they can write it into their contract that they don't want trash picked up before 6:00 AM. There are some condominiums here that it is in their contract that they don't have trash picked up until 9:00 AM. So my focus is on all of the individuals who allow this. That includes the city council, that includes the Hawaii Lodging and Tourism Association, that includes the Waikiki Improvement Association, and everyone who allows this. Once that ends, how can the trash companies dominate and do what they're doing when there's no one willing to allow it? So please, do what you got to do, start tomorrow. We cannot wait any longer.
Well, one of the things that I said during your swearing in was that writing legislation is difficult.
Thank you.
Because if you want to get something done, right, you write legislation, but oftentimes there's unintended results. One of the unintended results that I think you all should be aware of is that if the trash is picked up at 6:00 PM or later, there's going to be more traffic on your roads, right? Or, one of the ideas is that the trash companies will have to purchase more trucks so that they could get it all done at 6:00 o'clock. Guess what's going to happen, just using common sense and reason, that they're going to end up passing it on to you folks if they got to buy these trucks, which are expensive. So just want people to be aware of that, right?
We've heard that objection from the merchants who said that the cost is going to be passed on to them. They're already getting the cost passed on to them. This is the duopoly and in sixth grade, we learned that monopolies and duopolies result in higher prices. So they're already paying higher prices because we got a duopoly in our island here. So every question you've given has been overcome.
Excuse me, I need to move on to our next speaker. Sorry to disrupt the conversation.
No, no problem.
Thank you, council member.
Thank you, members. Thank you, Chair.
Senator Maury Waki, you got a stick to hit us with?
I had an accident. Congratulations, all of you who are new to the board, and I see returning members. I'm going to keep this short. You have my, my report and it really is the tail end of this session with a lot of bills passed and some of the vetoed bills already gone through. So we're kind of at the end of this session. I heard Greg in terms of the condo issue and we do have two bills that were passed and signed. One was a task force that's being created to look at planning associations as well as condo associations and looking at mediation as well as some of these provisions in the condo law that may have to be revised. So there will be a task force created, I don't know when, but it should be, you know, after July 1st, so if it's passed July 1st. We'll see who gets appointed to those and I would urge you all to, to write in your, your comments because this is the best way to get changes in the law because you've got a task force coming up with provisions that can be changed. The other is the training of board members and this one, we had a hard time with. We put in a bill to train board members. We wanted the Real Estate Commission to also train new condo owners because they also need to know that they're not in a single-family dwelling unit, they have to live with neighbors and to get along. So it was training of board members, training of association and, and the board members understanding their fiduciary duty and looking at all of the provisions of their condo, whether it's the bylaws and the articles of incorporation, so that they understand what they need to do in terms of residuals and getting, getting enough money in their account to make the repairs that need to be made. So, so that was in a bill. The bill passed, but, but people were concerned that it was hard enough to get people to run for the board, that they rather have board members who are not trained rather than not having board members. So the, the bill passed with, with at least the Real Estate Commission being required to develop a training program so that board members can be trained. And we're hoping to return next year to say, okay, if the Real Estate Commission has standards on board training, that we can now require it because there's something in place. So it's, it's a work in progress. So that's where we are in condos and condo law. I, I know that we had a lot of bills passed. Jamel is here in terms of the seniors and being able to provide services to them and so that they understand that there's, you know, if they're spammed or if they need to know about Medicare because everybody is getting to that age and needing to know what kinds of neutral information that can come along so you can make the right decisions in terms of your, your healthcare. We also had a banner year for the homeless. We've been working hard on getting services, mental health as well as substance abuse. And this year in the budget, there's $70 million to the Department of Health to look at mental health services, to also provide substance abuse services and stabilization beds for the homeless. And monies were in what we created as a new Homeless and Housing Solutions Office on the state basis to work with all the counties to, I think we have over the next two years, $45 million to create Kaohale's and those are little homes and also to have Ohana Zones. So we are having affordable housing also being developed. And so it's, we can't get rid of homelessness unless we have homes or places to put people. So a lot of the work has been focusing in this year and coming next year and the next on housing and affordable housing and supportive housing. We found that in the point-in-time data, that a number of homeless or on the verge of being homeless are seniors. So they don't have family, they don't have support and they are moving into the streets. So they don't have family, they don't have support, and they are moving into the streets. So in the last year, the point-in-time, uh, data shows that it was last year, there was 7% of the homeless and Anahuahu were over 65. This year, it's 27%. So it's exponential growth. And we really need to look at supportive housing and services so that we can keep them, you know, the vulner- most vulnerable into some kind of shelter rather than on the streets. I guess, I guess those are the major, um, we're gonna have a judicial nominee, Circuit Court judge being nominated, coming up. And so you have that information. You have the information on, on, um, a lot of the bills. And then you can just go online. I did want to encourage you to, um, to fill out my survey. It's a really simple survey. It shouldn't take very long. But we use the survey and the priorities that you put forward to, to us to create legislation. And, and again, I encourage you. We've got lots of good ideas here. And you heard from the prosecutor's office, we were working on the noise bills. It really requires a village. It really requires all of you to tell us what kinds of initiatives we really do need. And it's not easy. And, and then when we come to, um, to the bills being heard, we really do need your testimony. I know that in my committee, if nobody shows up, the bill is pretty much dead because there's nobody interested enough to come forward. So we had the disability bills. People came out and really makes a big difference. So I really encourage all of you on these kinds of initiatives that really are near and dear to you to work with us. We can, we can draft the legislation. But we really do need you to follow it all the way through until the governor signs the bill. So I'm, be willing to answer any questions. But thank you all very much for all your input all, all the time.
Questions for Senator Moriwaki.
Oh, I do want to say, I see, I see Michael and Jeff, that we did get another, another $800,000 for the sea level rise and Waikiki resilience and adaptation planning. And you folks are really important to that, so. And the neighborhood board, we want to come and present when the university is ready to. But thank you, both of you, and Catherine. Thank you.
I think we've worn them out, Senator. Thank you. And from the governor, William.
Oh, boy. Okay. The last one, not least, huh?
No.
How you doing, Chair? Vice Chair? Board members and new board members. I'm gonna keep this very, very short. We got in a time restraints, but I wanted to make note, uh, and, uh, I just want to thank all of you folks for a moment of silence earlier on with the former council member, Chief Lee Donahue. I believe in 2010, for about nine months, he was the council member. And he also asked me to be, be his chief of staff in this district. So in 2010. So I wanted to thank all of you for that moment of silence. Very dear to my heart, as my former life as a Hong Kong police officer. Thank you very much. Governor's away. He's out of state. Be returning on July 14th. Uh, he's in New York City for the governor's conference, attending the governor's conference and some offshoot meetings in New York City. I know we had many bills passed, signed by law. A lot of the bills that followed through Waikiki area, especially with the noise, the noise laws and everything else. So I want to thank you folks and, uh, where's Jacob? Jacob Deng? He was very instrumental and very persistent with myself on making sure some of those laws went through and resolved. So I just want to thank him. You folks got any questions for the governor's office?
Questions for the governor.
Okay.
William, thank you for being with us.
Thanks. Thank you, everybody.
Rick Eggit is ill tonight. He won't be here. Uh, very quickly, approval of minutes for May. Any corrections to the May minutes? If you see some later, please let Judy Ann know. So those minutes are approved. Uh, I've got a lot of public events. They're on your agenda. Uh, there's one that's not. The annual Dukes, Annual Ocean Fest Festival is gonna be August 18th through 27th. It's a major event. It doesn't affect the street, but it packs the beach. All of you who got the bags tonight and did not go to the official swearing in, there are two critical pieces of paper in there. One says you were sworn in. And the other gives information for Judy Ann. And that information will go to Sarah for email addresses to notify you when things happen. So please, if you have that bag with those pieces of paper in it that are in there, please give them to Judy Ann before you leave. Otherwise, you will not get information and people will not know how to contact you. Uh, I encourage everyone, as I said at the meeting, uh, do not just put the neighborhood commission's address for you because you will get stuff once a month. And even though Judy Ann has a big truck, it's hard to haul all of that stuff down here. Uh, we are, what they call, at the end of our time here, I'd like to ask everybody to support us putting away the tables and chairs. Look at that side of the room. That is what the chairs must look like. Sir, did you have something critical? Yeah, we are, come, come, say something. But the chairs need to go like that in the middle. They go in stacks of five against the wall. So, yes.
Thank you, Chair Finley. I appreciate it. My name is Robert Armstrong. I'm from the Chinatown Downtown Neighborhood Board. And, um, I want to, first of all, congratulate all of you on your elections and for being, uh, leaving just one neighborhood board without an electronic way of connecting and being democratic. So congratulations on that decision. But the reason why I'm here is because of democracy. It's been some 15 years since the neighborhood plan was reviewed. And I and a few other citizens have organized ourselves to start that process. We have no delusions that this isn't going to be a long-term process, probably a year or more. But we have to start somewhere. 15 years is enough. We love this system. We want it to be strengthened, renewed, rejuvenated. And so I invite the public, the entire island, to come to our organizational meeting on the 19th of August. That's Saturday, the 19th of August at 1:00 PM. And we are meeting at 1152 Smith Street in Chinatown. There is a city parking garage right behind the building off of Baritania at 1152 Smith Street. And that used to be the old Channel 14 Television Studios. It's now called New Life Center. But we're going to start that process, a grassroots effort. You know, so come with your ideas, your thoughts, your opinions, your criticisms, your suggestions, and we'll get this process going. One final time, Saturday, the 19th of August at 1:00, 1152 Smith Street. Again, the public is invited. We do look forward to hosting you. Mahalo. And thank you, Chair.